Yeah, well, I'll leave him there until... I hate to take it down.
I thought you took it down. I'm afraid of all these...
Yeah, I'm at 100 percent.
Can you recharge?
I'm at 50. I got 100 percent, so I'm okay.
Oh, sure.
You want this one?
I have one.
What happened to them all?
There was one at every...
Trying to walk home in the morning?
No appointments are reserved.
Is Mr. Redco to...
It's a good thing I just charged mine because she's almost dead.
That's great, we'll be ready. Did I take him too?
But mine goes dead really quick.
He's here.
Why have two cars at once when we're so close?
Okay.
Bring it.
Okay. Good evening. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and the chief, if you could lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the business of liberty, justice, and all.
Doris, attendance?
And Councilor Henning?
Here.
Councilor Hurley?
Here.
Councilor Cottkin?
Here.
Councilor Manusos?
Here.
Councilor Martino?
Here.
Councilor Brown?
Here.
Councilor Roberts is ill tonight.
Deputy Mayor Berry?
Here.
And Mayor Montanari?
Thank you, Doris, here. Starting with the proclamation this evening. Good to go. Great. Gentlemen, thank you for coming this evening. Whereas Fire Prevention Week was established to commemorate the great Chicago fire, the tragic 1871 conflagration that killed more than 250 people, left 100,000 homeless, and destroyed more than 17,400 structures, and burned more than 2,000 acres. And whereas, since 1984, 4th and 5th graders in Connecticut schools have carried the fire prevention message, "Fire Prevention, Everyone, Every Day," into their schools and homes to emphasize the importance of fire safety. It is the slogan imprinted on every poster entered in the annual Fire Prevention Poster Contest in our elementary schools throughout the town. This message has been carried for over two decades since the Connecticut Fair Plan and the Office of State Fire Marshal first sponsored this contest. And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, the town of Weathersfield is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our town. And whereas, the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month," effectively serves to remind us all to make sure that we file safety measures every time we cook. And therefore, in recognition of the importance of fire safety and fire prevention, I hereby proclaim October 5 through the 11th, 2014, as Fire Prevention Week in the town of Weathersfield. In addition thereto, by the power vested in me as mayor, I, Paul Montanari, on behalf of the Weathersfield Town Council, extend the appreciation of all of our residents of Weathersfield to the members of our fire department for a job well done. Witness thereof, I hereby set my hand upon the seal of the town and fix this, the 5th of October. Thank you, and gentlemen, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. You're welcome. Thank you for that. Next one. Our first order of business is, anyone wishing to speak this evening, public comment on the resolution concerning, we'll add it right after that, concerning the adoption of the 2014-19 Capital Region National Hazard Mitigation Plan update. Does anybody here this evening wish to address that with respect to a public hearing on just that item to start? Anyone here wishing to speak on that item? Last call. I declare that hearing closed. Deputy Mayor, I think you have an agenda item to add before we move into the agenda?
Move to add to the agenda, Item B 5, Resolution Concerning Applications to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security.
Second. Motion and second. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tensions? Thank you. Now, we'll move on to general comment. Anyone in the public wishing to speak on any topic this evening? Gus?
Gus Colantonio, 16 Morrison Avenue. Guess what? The stop sign. I just want to basically read an email that I received in February 2010 from Mr. Mike Turner. And it says, "In February 2010, our survey crew field measured the intersection site distance from Tifton Road looking west at Morrison Avenue." Now, 2010, it was before the construction. The measured site distance was 340 feet. Using the Connecticut DOT guidelines, the distance is sufficient for a road intersection design with design speed of between 30 and 35 miles per hour. 335 feet needed, and 390 feet for 30 and 35 needed respectively. When I measured the distance after the construction, and I came up with 240 feet, I guess, you know, town manager, town engineer, and everybody left at me says, "Ho, ho, it's not true." Subsequent to that, the town went and took the measurement again, and they measured to be 232 feet. Now, in 2010, if they used, or they refer to Connecticut DOT standards, can I ask the town engineer, or the town manager, or anybody to do the same, to see what's good for? They say that's 232 feet. I would like to know, what's the speed for that? And of course, if it doesn't meet the requirements, something to be done. Another email later on. Let me see. This was done September 26, 2014, I guess, from the town manager.
2014?
No, it's not. It's basically 2012. "Per your question at the council meeting, a report was prepared using the beginning date of January 2009 to ending June 18, 2012. During that time, there were no accidents reported at the intersection of Morrison Avenue and Tifton, or Hillcrest Avenue and Orchard. I hope this answers your question." Well, it never did answer my question, because the question that I have tonight basically is this. Why, why did you do the research on Hillcrest and Orchard? There is no accident. There are three stop signs there. Obviously, the stop signs are not needed. Why are they still there? Did we get some kind of direction from the police department, or what? And if you never had any intention of doing anything with that intersection with three stop signs, why waste time and research if there were any accidents? Thank you, that's all for now.
Thank you, Gus. Others wishing to speak this evening, public comment? Rick?
Good evening, everyone. Rick Gary, 35 Harding Street. I'm actually here to report on, from the Cox Cable Advisory Council. We had a meeting recently, and normally, we don't discuss anything so critical that I have to come here. But I just wanted to let you know something that Cox is going to be doing soon, and you're probably going to be hearing about from certain people. And they're going all digital, is what they're saying, which means, a couple years ago, all the TV stations were forced to go digital, and you saw a lot of changes go on. Now, it's the final leg of that, where they're going 100 percent digital. And what that means is, if you now have, let's say, cable, and you plug a TV directly into the wall without a box, and it works, that will no longer happen, ever, after, I think, January. So, starting in November, they're going to start announcing it in the bills and making advertising, every TV you want to work will have to have a box. So, to make this happen, the boxes that they're going to be providing are a little, they're small, and they're called DTAs, Digital Transfer, Digital to Analog Transfer Boxes. And the way it's going to work, everyone will get a box for every TV at no cost. But they'll rent, the rental cost is $1.99 a month per box. Yes, more money to your cable company. So, what they're going to do is, they're giving everybody a one-year grace period on all boxes for free, no rental. And then, based on Medicare and other criteria they're using, you could get up to a three-to-five year grace period on income levels, based on income levels. After those periods, though, every box will be $1.99 per box in your house. And no TV will work anymore with your Cox Cable without that box. And I believe the boxes can be shipped to you, there'll be an online ordering system, there's no limit to how many you want. Obviously, you're only going to take what you need, because they're $2 a month after you buy them. And supposedly, this is going to happen, starting, the notices are going to go out in November, but I believe it's going to roll out in January of next year, sometime about there. As far as the schools and the public access here at the town hall, it could affect that. They are committed to working with the towns to make sure there's no problem, that the transition is smooth, and everybody, it works. The only benefit that I've seen so far is, if you now are putting your TV directly into the wall to get public access, you have to go to Channel 117-173, I think, or something like that. Now, it'll be back on Channel 14, 15, or 16, is what they're telling me. So, for that $2 a month, I guess that's the only benefit that... They say there's going to be some more channels that you'll get because of this, I don't know, probably, it's those, I don't know, if anybody has over-air digital, there's a lot of TV stations out there now, bounce TV, Cozy TV, all these crazy, you might get some of those now on a box. But other than that, that's what they're saying. So, I just wanted to report that tonight, because I am sure that once this happens, some people are probably going to be upset over it. And they're saying there's nothing they can do, it's the digital transition that's happening, and it is true, other cable companies have already done it in the state, or across the country. So, that's it. And if there's any questions, the advisory council is always there to help out. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Bob?
Good evening. Robert Young, 20, Copper Mill Road. You know, for a long time, Mr. Colantonio has been coming before this council, asking for a stop sign. And, you know, you folks have put stop signs all over the town. We have normal ones, and then we have abnormal ones, like bicycle signs. Signs that tell people, "The bicycle trail is over there." I mean, that's a waste of money, but this man needs a sign, so his neighborhood is safe. And I would hope that you would somehow give Morrison Avenue a waiver. You know what waivers are? You always ask for waivers up at the state of Connecticut. Give his street a waiver, so he at least can have a safe street, and maybe it'll be quieter, too, having a stop sign. Next. Mr. Gary was just up here a moment ago, talking to you about Cox and the new box that they want to distribute throughout the community. I was looking for a good reason to dump them. And, you know, I don't need any more boxes in my house. I want to throw the one out on the street that I currently have, that I don't even use. And that's a television that has a box that I got from them some time ago, and we don't even use it. So, it's a good reason to throw Cox out. You can go to Radio Shack, or wherever in the world you want to go, and buy an antenna, put it in the house, up in the attic, and it'll pull in a great deal of stations, and you can, for $50. For $50, I can avoid paying a lot of Cox fees. And not only do we pay money to Cox for their service, but there's loads of taxes involved in that, too. Same like the telephones that we have, loaded with taxes. It would be a good idea to get rid of those, too. But paying $1.99 per box, even having it for nothing, I don't want it. Get rid of it. All the junk that's on those television stations, maybe you can get this access out on the airwaves, so we can pick it up when I get my new antenna. But anyway, it's something to consider. They're not a monopoly. Now, also, for some time now, probably August, September, the state of Connecticut normally comes out with the CMT test results and the CAPT test results. And of course, this particular year is unusual, because there's been a lot of schools that aren't doing all the testing, there aren't all testing going on anymore, and we have lost what's known as transparency from how our schoolteachers, our administrators, and our students are doing. I know, the teachers come up here, the Board of Education comes up here, and says they're doing wonderful. That's a self-interest statement that they make. I don't believe a word they say. I want third-party tests, I want third parties to correct those tests, and I want third parties to put the results out. We don't have that anymore. The 3rd grade, those different elementary grades up to 8th grade, were tested every year for reading, writing, math, and science. This year, it's only science to a couple grades, I think it's maybe four. And of course, the cap tests are going to probably be eliminated as well. So, here we go, losing transparency, which we had. But our educational governor has had a lot to do with this, and in order to protect and hide the bad school system that we have, and it is bad, you're hiding it. We're now hiding even more of it, without giving any tests, and the citizens will have no exposure to what's really going on with our students. And our students cost us a tremendous amount of money. And somehow, we should be reducing our costs, since we're getting less and less visibility. So, I would encourage you to look at their budgets and reduce them, because we're not getting to see how good or bad our students are doing, we have no idea how good or bad our teachers are doing, nor our administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening, public comment? Thank you. We'll move on to council reports. Council reports? Jeff?
A few. Let's start with the insurance committee, a couple of items. The health claims, first couple of months of this year, they were a little above trend in July and below in August. I guess we probably got an average start to the year. There, the Board of Ed is looking at reviving its safety committee. You may recall that we've had a number of, relatively minor, but a number of workers' comp claims there. Chris Monroe, on September 1st, moved from Constitution to USI, which handles, also handles our property and casualty and workers' comp. And I guess one thing, Jeff, we were going to check to see whether we needed to have a council resolution, just accepting the transfer, or whether it just goes with Chris?
No, we'll probably bring something back to the council as an amendment to either his contract or USI's contract.
Okay, all right, so we'll be cutting something at a future meeting.
Yep.
Okay, and the last thing at the insurance committee, the committee unanimously passed a resolution to recommend that the town undertake a claims audit, which would basically involve hiring a firm to go through, and basically pull claims at Anthem to ensure that they're paying the proper amount, not overpaying healthcare claims. The town has never done that before, it's, we probably pay about $9 million a year in claims. And I'd recommend that, that we, the town go out and issue an RFP for such an audit, but I would suggest that we invite members of the insurance committee and our agent of record, which would be Chris, to discuss this with the council. And they said at the meeting that they would be willing to do that, to come before the council at a future meeting. That's insurance. Jerry is not here tonight, she chairs shared services, but we had a meeting last week of the shared services committee, and the committee is looking at how we would go about merging the IT departments from the town and the Board of Ed. Board of Ed has a larger IT function and a larger IT group. So, we're looking for our senior staff from town hall and from the Board of Ed to put together a proposed implementation plan, and Jerry wants the shared services committee to meet pretty much monthly. And ideally, we would look for implementation as early as the new budget year, which would start July 1st. And then finally, Budget and Finance had a lengthy meeting last week, where we heard proposals from four firms vying to be our financial advisor for future bond issues, and we'll be taking that up later tonight. Last thing, also in Budget and Finance, on October 21st, we'll have a meeting with, where we'll invite the town's retirees, and there's been a request that we consider an increase in the pension for retired employees for the first time in 20 years or so, and Budget and Finance is just going to allow the retirees, or any other members of the public, to come in and comment on the, on that idea. And that's going to be October 21st, so, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. You had a lot of meetings last week. Thank you for your time in that. Other council reports? Tony?
Two committees. First, the Senior Citizens Advisory Commission met last week, and I just want to remind all seniors out there, there's going to be, this coming Friday, October 10th, the Senior Center Open House down at the Pittkins Center. They say, "Come and see what the Senior Center has to offer." Today will include brief class demonstrations on Broadway Dance Fitness, Chair Yoga, Tai Chi, Kwan Do, Belly Dancing, Wi-Fi Bowling, Rhythm of Chairs, Choral Group, displays of their work on acrylic art classes, the Red Onion Senior Quilters, and Senior Club Knitters. For special offers, they're going to have somebody there doing blood pressure and blood sugar testing by Apple Rehab, cholesterol testing by Clinical Lab Partners, free chairs massages by Bob Ragoe, free technical assistance with your tablet, smartphone, or digital camera offered by Weathersfield High School students, free document shredding by Infro Shred, and refreshments will be provided by the lodge at Cold Springs. Also, just wanted to say that, oh, where is it here? Okay, on October 28th, there will be a senior expo, it's the 8th Annual Senior Expo at the Cromwell Senior Center, hosted by Senator Doyle and Son, the annual affair, and all our seniors are invited to attend that, to get updated on what's available to seniors. So, that's a result of what came out of the Senior Center Advisory Commission. And then also, last week, we had a Public Works Committee meeting, and at that, we reviewed a draft energy performance contracting RFP, where we'll look to select a firm, look into energy savings for our building, streetlights, and possible solar panels, asking where they should go, including look at the ones that the chief is recommending for the cartport down at the police station. So, we authorized him to go forward to look at that, there's no charge upfront for that. And the other thing is, the committee also looked at the refuse and recycling bill, which will be going back out, because the current contract expires on June 30th. So, we want to have a new firm in place by then, so that contract will be going out shortly, so that we can have numbers and stuff for this year's upcoming budget, and be ready to implement by July 1st.
Thank you, Tony. Some of those senior programs sound right up your alley.
I'll be there for the full thing.
Belly dancing one particularly, right?
Pardon?
Belly dancing?
That's on the list.
Other council reports?
I did attend the building committee meeting two weeks ago, and actually, there was a meeting just before this meeting, and we do have a couple of change orders that I'm sure folks will have questions, and we've got, there's a representative from Fussin O'Neill and the building committee as well, who will answer those questions regarding some of the costs surrounding remediation. On a positive note, the glass for the gym, really all the new wings had been ordered and is ready to go in, and things seem to be on schedule with regard to that. The boilers were installed. The, there is an oil tank, and again, that was found underneath the walkway, that actually had some oil in that, that has to be remediated, and that is being done as well. But again, there's folks, I'm sure there'll be some questions surrounding that, and we have people here to answer those momentarily, but the project itself is obviously moving forward, full steam with the students, the students relatively getting through the day and without any major inconveniences. So, the project is going forward in a positive manner on that score. I will say, with regard to the, just another reminder, the track is going to be resurfaced, and when that process starts, it's critically important for folks to pay attention to the signage and the fencing, and to stay off that track. It needs time to cure, so, again, just by way of reminder, folks should be aware of that.
Thank you, Steve. Further council reports? Council comments? Tony?
I just want to put a reminder out there that this Thursday at the community center, from 2:00 to 5:00, is the second flu clinic in town, so I just want to remind people who want to get their flu shots to come on down on this Thursday to get them.
Thank you, Tony. Don?
Couple things. I attended the Source to See cleanup at the Weathersfield Cove a couple Saturdays ago. There was pretty good turnout from scouting groups, there were not a whole, there were some Weathersfield residents, but there were more out-of-town residents who came this year. I think that we also had support of the Department of Wildlife and Agriculture, who were there on Friday, and they took out eight tires just on Friday, and there were 12 tires taken out last year. So, they had a boat that they were able to really get around the edges of the cove and really do a good cleaning. They had access to a boat on Saturday as well, and people worked really hard to clean up the area and did a really nice job. And then just one more comment about the oil tank under the building. I know this is the one that was supposed to have been remediated back in the, I don't know if it was the last renovation or the previous one to that, and I know that we can't go back and do anything about it, because it was so long ago. However, just really concerned, I know that it's under a portion of the building that's intact, and that the remediation at the time was going to be filling it up with sand to, you know, make sure that it was full. And is that acceptable to DEEP? And is that acceptable to DEEP? No?
Yes, and it would have been acceptable then, but it wasn't filled to the brim, and there is some product and some water in it that we've discovered that is leaching out of the tank. It's probably the original fuel tank for the, for the building, which was taken out of commission in 1983. So DEEP's plans, and you'll hear more about this this evening, is that we'll empty the tank, clean it out, and then fill it with concrete, and that'll stay in place, which is fully acceptable to DEEP.
Okay.
Thanks, Don. Thanks for attending that event as well, too, Don. Other council comments? Mike?
Just want to mention that a new restaurant in town opened, I'm sure Peter will talk about it. Chips opened today for a fundraiser for the Children's Connecticut Medical Center, and I believe it's open to the public tomorrow. It was actually open to the public today, they said anybody could come into the fundraiser and have breakfast and leave whatever they wanted for the, for the hospital. And I also, just to make a comment on what Donna said, when we took a tour at the high school not that long ago, we were walking on that walkway, and we were told that that tank was fine and there was no need to do anything. So I'm just wondering how we knew it was fine, and then not too long, not too much longer, it was leaking.
That'll be addressed, as we'll get to that conversation.
Yeah, and, yes. Absolutely. We'll answer those questions.
Any other council comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to our town manager. Jeff, anything? I know you've got Peter up on deck.
Yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Peter, talk about economic development and...
Chips.
And 40 varieties of pancakes. How many did you have?
I only had one.
So boring, Mike.
But were they good?
They were very good.
Was that one of each, Mike?
No.
And I haven't had dinner yet, so you're making me hungry here. Yes, Chips did open for training today, drove by about a half hour ago, and the place is very busy. They open officially tomorrow. As was said, their specialty is pancakes. I can attest to those as well. So please stop in and let them know who you are, and you're from the town, and they'd be very pleased to have you as customers. We have not set a ribbon-cutting date yet, but we will get back to you with, with those details, but we're very excited about that. Turned out to be a very nice, nice project. The owner of that shopping center has done numerous things over the short little while since he's owned the building, but we're very pleased with that. You do have my report, October 2014, I apologize, I think it only got to you today. We've been, been very busy. I'll just go over a couple of other highlights and be happy to answer any questions on any of the other contents of the document. But additionally, in terms of restaurants opening, Idoichi, 580 Silas Dean Highway, I believe is opened. We're doing an official ribbon-cutting tomorrow at 11:00 a.m. there, so if you are in town and you have a few minutes at 11 o'clock, please stop by and welcome them to town. It's a sushi and hibachi steakhouse, and they've done a nice job there and invested pretty substantially in the property. You may have also noticed Office Depot with the various closing signs. They are with about a, about a month and a half away from, from closing, and I mentioned this to you at, at our last meeting, they've closed, I think, both locations in the Hartford area as part of a larger effort to close facilities throughout the state and the nation. In its place, shortly after they closed, you will see work underway to open up a Planet Fitness facility in that space. They're going to take all of that space and hopefully be open very shortly after the new year. Additionally, good news, Dance 10, which is located at 401 Silas Dean Highway, has doubled their space. They've expanded into some vacant space next to them, they're located at 401 Silas Dean Highway. We've got a ribbon-cutting to celebrate their expansion, and we're going to do that on Thursday of this week. So once again, if you're around on Thursday, I think at 11:30, we've set that up, please stop in and also participate in that, and congratulate them on their expansion as well. You may have also noticed the Tamarind Grill, speaking, once again, another restaurant in the Weathersfield Shopping Center. That is in the process of converting over to an Indian-style restaurant. I don't even want to try and pronounce the name because I know I won't do it justice, but, so they're in the process of doing that right now, so we'll have an Indian restaurant in town. I'm not sure we've had one before, but this might be the first Indian restaurant in town. We're making progress on the development agreement for the demolition of 1,000 Silas Dean Highway. The town attorney is putting together the, the scope of that agreement. Once that is in a, in a more final form, we'll be bringing that to council to discuss the details under which we will be providing them with the steep grant that we received, so progress is being made there. I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, but just another plug, on Thursday, December 11th, at the Country Club, we're going to be celebrating the 25th Annual Salute the Business, so please, if you haven't already, mark your calendar for that, it's always a nice night. Just a reminder, by November 28th, the state has asked that if we are interested in additional steep money in 2015, we would have to submit our application for those funds. So we're going through an internal process of trying to decide what the top projects are. We'll be bringing those to council at a future meeting, certainly before the November 28th deadline.
And if I may interrupt, if you have ideas as council members, please get them to Peter or I, so we can include those in the, in the list.
Not, not, not the Economic Development Commission, but the redevelopment agency has started to meet again. I think we've met two or three times over the last month or so. So they're trying to identify potentially other projects that we can assist on. They've set their sights on four or five properties. I think they're going to invite some property owners to meetings to discuss what, if anything, we can do to assist in some redevelopment of some of the obvious properties that we've been talking about for a number of years. So there are a couple of ideas out there, so we're going to, we're going to meet on an as-needed basis, and certainly only if, if property owners are interested in sitting down and talking, so we'll keep you posted about that. It's that time of year again, we're going to do the community photo contest, so any photographers out there, the deadline for entries is November 11th, so that we can incorporate any great photos into next year's town calendar. Some good news, the Planning and Zoning Commission, boy, it takes time to get through the legal process, but I think it was two years ago, denied a subdivision application on Hartford Avenue. We just received notice of that decision, and we're pleased to report that the decision made by the commission was upheld by the court system. We've been receiving notices from the Connecticut Siting Council. There is a telecommunications tower planned on Two-Rod Highway in Weathersfield on the Harris property. Just so you are aware, we do not have local jurisdiction over those towers. Those are regulated exclusively by the Connecticut Siting Council. There is, however, a public process where residents, town officials can provide input into that process. We'll certainly keep you posted on when those hearings are scheduled, but I just wanted to make sure it's on your radar screen, and then if you get phone calls about that. We do have plans in the office, and we can certainly provide the information that's been presented to us, but I just wanted to make sure you're aware of that. And then, lastly, you may have also been getting resident emails, but on Russell Road, the Toll Brothers project, which is obviously in Newington, is winding its way through the legal process. I think there's some efforts to settle the pending lawsuits regarding that development project through the various boards and commissions in Newington, so I just wanted to make you aware of that as well. Those are the highlights that I wanted to point out to you, I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Peter, that Toll Brothers, if you could, right now, the status of that is that project has been denied, correct?
Denied, and the developer took an appeal to, you know, through the court process.
And that's still, is still happening?
It's getting towards the end of that process, there have been some conversations about, you know, negotiating some sort of settlement. I can't tell you specifically, you know, what the level of interest in settling that is from the Newington official side, but it has, they were on the wetlands commission agenda within the last week or two. I did not attend those. I'm not sure if they were public discussions or they were an executive session, depending on the lawsuits, but they are beginning that process of trying to see if there's some compromise so that the development project could go forward.
In some form?
In some form.
Just as an aside, we do have an attorney that represents our interests. We are a participant in all those proceedings, so we have given a list of requirements or requests to mitigate the impacts to Weathersfield's infrastructure, wetlands, so forth and so on. And so far, those have been honored in any conversations that have taken place.
Thank you. Other questions for Peter on any of the topics you covered? Jeff?
Hi. Peter, I noticed that Rock, River Rock Yoga is staying in town.
Yes.
So congratulations, I assume. Is that some of the work that...
I think that certainly our interest in, you know, having her stay here as a business as town was appreciated. I think she was also, I mean, her business is yoga, so I think she retained a Realtor, a commercial, commercial broker that is familiar with town, and found a nice little space for her. So I think, for the time being, she's, she's pretty happy about that.
Good. Where is that, Peter? Where's she going?
286 Silas Dean Highway, down near the PD, right next to the south, in one of the white buildings right there, next to the police department.
Peter, thank you very much.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Jeff, anything else?
I think the big question tonight is on some of the happenings with the high school, so we'll, we'll save that for that agenda.
Good. Thank you, Jeff. Dolores, anything?
Just that absentee ballots are available now in my office for the November election.
Thank you. Moving on to council action, I believe there are no resignations or appointments to boards or commissions this evening, so we'll move to B1C.
Motion at the town of Weathersfield, town council hereby adopt the 2014 through 2019 Capital Region Natural Hazards Mitigation Plan update and authorize Jeff Bridges, CEO/town manager, to execute same on behalf of the town of Weathersfield.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll ask Mike to talk a little bit about this and answer any questions you have.
Evening, Mayor. This is a five-year update of the Capital Region's pre-disaster natural hazard mitigation plan. And what that does is it's a regional plan that all the towns in CROG have participated in, and this is, this came about as part of federal law that established in the year 2000. So we've had a plan since 2000. We had our own plan in 2008 as part of the region, and they have to be updated every five years. So I've participated in numerous public hearings and outreach, public hearings through CROG. It's involved the police department, fire department, physical services. We've all met on several occasions, hashed through what we felt would be the most impacted natural hazards that could occur to Weathersfield, and addressed solutions to try and address those, both long-term and short-term. And pretty much the same, you know, it ends up being the same throughout the region. You know, we're all pretty much vulnerable to, you know, to the same types of hazards in our region, that's, you know, we're so small, so. So that's why we've developed a regional plan to approach these things. And adoption of these plans will also help us try and secure federal money towards long-term solutions as well. So I'm recommending your adoption.
Questions? Any questions about that? Pretty straightforward. Jeff, anything? You don't have to add anything at this point.
No, no, I think it's a comprehensive plan, but as, as Mike said, we're all vulnerable to the same things, weather-related, traffic-related, you know, those kind of things, so it's a good regional plan.
Okay, we have a motion a second in front of us to adopt. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That's good. We have no unfinished business, we'll move into three other business. Three A, selection of a financial advisor. Jeff?
Motion to award of a three-year contract with options for the town to renew for two one-year periods to PFM Group for independent financial advisory services.
Second.
We have a motion a second before us. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'll ask Mike O'Neill to come up to talk about this, this topic. We held, because of certain regulatory changes, we had to go out to find a new financial advisor who works with the town to structure and facilitate bond-issue sales. So our, the Budget and Finance Committee had interviewed potential candidates last week and came up with a recommendation.
Hi, Mike.
Good evening.
How are you?
Mike O'Neill, Finance Director. I'm well. My office issued an RFP back in August as a result of the changes that Jeff mentioned, and we received five responses. Four of those were qualifying responses, one of them wasn't. And the Budget and Finance Committee met last week and interviewed all four firms. And I guess I would defer to the chairman of the committee, but PFM, the PFM Group was selected, and, you know, they're a very good, very qualified firm.
We, we spent a long meeting. We met from about 6 till about 9:30. We interviewed four different firms, as Mike said. I think all of them would have done fine as a financial advisor. PFM, we really narrowed it down to PFM Group and one other advisor, and the committee discussed it at a fair, at some length, and we chose PFM Group. I think because, A, their proposal was probably the most thorough, they have a great deal of experience, they're actually, I think, the leading advisor to municipalities in the, in the, in the Northeast, and one of the, one or two leading advisors in the country, they're based in Philadelphia. They've worked with Bridgeport, Simsbury, New Haven, I guess they're going to be starting to work with Woodstock, so they've had work in, in Connecticut. Their fees, I think, are comparable to, to the other firm that we were looking at. Some cases, they could be lower, in some cases, they could be higher, but they were pretty, pretty much in the, in the same ballpark. I should say that this group will work with the town for, on a number of items. First of all, we're going to be issuing up to four different tranches of bonds to finance the high school over the next several years. They will work with us on preparing the, essentially, the offering statement to the, to potential bond buyers, so they'll do work on the, on the legal side, but they're also going to work with the town to ensure that we basically get the widest, cast the widest possible net for potential investors in these bonds, because, of course, the more people who are bidding to buy our bonds, the lower the interest rate's going to be. The other key thing that we interviewed PFM and several others about is ratings, because one of the things that, when folks who are may not be terribly familiar with Weathersfield will look at, they're going to look at the credit ratings on these bonds, and currently, mentioned it earlier, we just recently were upgraded from AA to AA+ at Standard and Poor's, and we have an AA2 rating at Moody's, and we wanted to talk to PFM about the potential of having those ratings go up further, and under certain metrics, because the town's been so well-managed and conservatively managed from a financial standpoint for, for the last decade or so. All of the potential bidders for this work indicated that credit upgrades are possible. So clearly, when you're selling 20-year bonds, and the lower you're, the interest rate that you can get on those bonds, given that they're going to be outstanding for up to 20 years, the lower the burden on the taxpayers in the town. So it's really, it's critical to get the right advisor here, and PFM, you know, I would say was the, was the consistently, I guess, the superior choice among four very good candidates. They clearly have the experience and had, appeared to have good recommendations as well from, from folks who have worked with them in the past. So I don't think there was any, at the end, any disagreement among the four Budget and Finance Committee members to choose them.
Jeff, thank you for that report, and the work, of course, of the whole Finance Committee on it, it sounded like you did an awful lot to get it there, Mike, too. Appreciate the background work, the RFP, of course, Jeff. So questions about it before we proceed? I think it's pretty straightforward, pretty clear that we've identified a candidate to complete our financial advising, it's going to take us through a very important period of time in town with some extensive bonding, and I particularly liked what you shared, Jeff, about possibility of increasing right off the heels of a recent upgrade, perhaps even upgrading it slightly more, which could be very critical for our town, so. So, we have a motion, a second in favor of authorizing that to select this. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thanks again, Mike. Appreciate the work there. Three B.
Motion to cancel the Town Council meeting of November 3, 2014.
Second.
Mr. Town Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Traditionally, historically, consistently, we've canceled the meeting that takes place before the election, primarily to allow staff the time to prepare for Election Day, which consumes a lot of people on, from the town staff. And I think Dolores prepared a memo, which is very explanatory and just something we'd like to do. And it's consistent with what we've done in the past to accommodate the election.
Thank you, Jeff. Any questions, concerns? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. We're moving to four bids. First, four A.
Motion to approve the purchase of video wall system for the Weathersfield Police Department from Vision Point for the state contract price of $76,571.85 from the asset forfeiture account.
Second.
Thank you. Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Chief Sotranz here this evening, and I'll ask him to go over this item with you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. How's everybody?
Good.
This was something that is very unique in the history of the Weathersfield Police Department, that we have two things that come together. One, a completely new communication center that's being, that was gutted and being built up, at the same time, having some extra money in asset forfeiture where we can purchase something that is, at this time, is advanced, but I think in the future will be something that is very common, you know, something that will be necessary for us in the future. But having it, getting it now is much better because of the fact that the communication center is, doesn't have all the radio and RMS and CAD and all the other stuff that has to go in there. So, we'll be able to get this, hopefully, get this video wall up on that, on one of our walls. What I'm looking for, or I'm really, the desire here is for safety. And one of the things that we can do with the new cameras that are in the cruisers is actually live video stream. And it'll, we'll have the opportunity that dispatchers can actually see two of the cars, not all the cars, but two of the cars, and they can switch from which ones live. They actually see what the officers see as they're driving up on a scene or an accident or whatever. So, it's something that is going to really put us one step ahead of a lot of other departments. There are a number of departments that do have it already. Hartford, New Britain, Newington, and I'm sure there'll be others in the future, too. But I'd like to try to keep us technologically ahead now that we have this opportunity. Does anybody have any questions or...
I have a couple, Chief. One, have you seen the other one? Have you gone, I assume, to visit some of the ones that are in play already?
Yes, I saw New Britons and I saw Harfords. Both of those are larger than what we're proposing here, but it's truly amazing, it really is, because you can isolate. You can have, you know, the different TVs doing different things, or you can have it all one. So, when you have a large area, you get a lot more detail in what you're looking at in a monitor, you know? You try to look at that TV above the door there, and you're really limited, it's this distance away as to what you can see. But if you're closer, you might want it that size. And this gives you the options for all of that. If we ever had a situation where we have a number of people in the communication center that need to watch something that's important, then you can put it out on the whole screen and not miss the details that you would be in the distance away from it. It's, I don't know if you've, if you've ever seen anything like that before. It's pretty amazing when you're looking at it, especially because the TVs have very small bezels, you know, the trim that's around it, so it almost looks like one continuous picture. And it's, it's pretty impressive.
So, when an officer, let's say an officer, you said there's two vehicles that can be looked at and monitored at any one time.
Yes.
So, an officer would call and dispatch and indicate they're perhaps going on a call, and that would trigger the dispatcher making a decision to switch to that specific camera?
Yes.
So, it's driven by the communication between dispatch and the officers in the field?
Yes.
Where they are?
We're not there yet, but it's, we're getting there. The new, the new watch guard system that we are purchasing, in fact, I believe it's been delivered, it hasn't been installed yet, but it's been delivered, has that capability of live video streaming. We didn't have that before. We need to upgrade our, the modems in the cars, you know, so there's more bandwidth. And I mean, there's a lot of things that still got, have to go in with this, but eventually, that's what I'm looking for, is to get, that's, to me, that seems to be the, probably the most important reason to get that video wall. I mean, there are a lot of other reasons. We have other cameras, we have cameras throughout the building, we have cameras, and I'd like to be able to increase some of the cameras that we have in town. We have one at Millwoods, and we have a number of them at the high school. I'm hoping that some of the other schools get the cameras, and if in fact, God forbid, we ever have it, something at a school, we can see that live. That will go a long way for the safety of the children, teachers and everyone else. I mean, I'm just saying that this is, this is, I think, a significant move forward. It's, it's, it's still in its infancy, but we're, at least we have the potential to get there. And I don't think it's that far up in the future either.
The other question I had, Chief, is when I looked at the proposal and the breakdown of the cost, there's a reference in there to maintenance agreement for the first year, and then it references a second year. Can you just, I was a little confused, what is covered under this particular proposal? The $76,000 roughly, is it a one-year or a two-year warranty? And then is it a chargeback for time and services after that period? Could you just share that a little bit?
I'm not really sure exactly what that is at this point in time. There was some confusion about that. I just know that we didn't have to, it's the maintenance of it itself, again, that's a choice that we can make in the future, but it is free for at least the first year. We were negotiating for maybe more years, and then we'll have to make a decision whether or not we go forward with that. It's like anything else, it's, they're TVs, there's connections and stuff like that. We might not need that maintenance contract, I don't know. But again, it's, it's not something that is critical at this point in time, in my opinion. But I was just as confused as you were, and that's something that we're going to have to nail down.
Good. Questions? Other questions? Jeff?
Just quickly, you mentioned that two of the cars would be equipped to...
No, all the cars are equipped, but they would only be able to watch two of the cars because of the bandwidth.
Oh, two at a time?
Right.
Okay. But any of the car, they could watch through any of the cars?
Any car that has that, that has the digital camera in it can be watched. It just, it can only watch two at a time.
But they can switch between cars of...
Right.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Tony?
Chief, is the system capable of being enhanced in the future to add other locations, you know, more fields, other town buildings whatsoever?
Oh, yes. Absolutely. Yeah. Anything that has an IP camera can, will, can show up on that, that screen. So, yeah, that's what I'm hoping for, is in the future, if we do get more cameras around town, especially with the schools and stuff, that we'll be able to watch live.
Okay.
Mike, speaking of the live, a couple of weeks ago, you came in and talked about the dashboard cameras?
Yes.
Would they be able to see those live, too, as...
That's what I was just talking about. The cameras that are in the cars, we'd be able to watch two at a time, eventually.
Oh, okay. So, you could actually get a different perspective of what is going on at the scene?
Yes.
Yep.
It will allow the dispatchers to see what the officer sees at the scene of anything. So, I think that will, it goes a long way to having a dispatcher understand what's happening so there isn't any confusion and less chances of someone getting hurt. So, I think it goes a long way to enhancing the safety of the public and the officers.
Chief, does this record, or is it the camera itself and the vehicle that does the...
Yeah, the camera itself and the vehicles record. So, we have that recording. But this, what this does is it gives us the opportunity of someone other than the officer in the car seeing what's happening at the scene.
Okay.
Other comments, questions? Chief, I also want to thank you. I know asset forfeiture is the source for this, which, you know, is a non-budgetary item in terms of the town's taxpayers. I appreciate you. And I know that you have some rules of the road, so to speak, on the use of that. This one seems like a natural with safety implied, but I do appreciate the contribution from your, your house, I guess, on this as well. We have a motion, a second in favor of this. Please, vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you, Chief, for coming up and explaining.
Thank you.
Four B.
Motion to accept the bid from RS Site and Sports LLC for $144,386.30 for the replacement of the tennis courts at the Webb Elementary School.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. At this time, I'll ask Mike to come up. I think we get some modifications to, to the bid we can make this evening based upon the concrete, so we want to talk a little bit about that.
Good evening, councilors. This past summer, we had let the bid out, as you recall, and we rejected the bids because they came in too high. Working with Kathy and actually folks from the city of Farmington, we redesigned the bid specs to go back out to bid, offering up a post-tension concrete as an option for the, for the courts. So, we rebid the project, giving bidders an equal opportunity between using asphalt or using the post-tension concrete. And we got bids in all of those categories, and the apparent low bidder is this RS Turf, who happened to be the low bidder in, in the Farmington project as well as others. Their bid, their bid came in, and their bid was slightly higher than the money that we have budgeted between the CIP budget, the USTA grant, and the Connecticut grant. So, in talking with the, the low vendor, there is an opportunity to save about $10,000. Included in the bid specs, we included a perimeter drain around the, an underdrain system, essentially, around the perimeter of the asphalt court. And according to this particular manufacturer, he doesn't need it. Because the post-tension concrete is basically, it's a structural slab that sits on top of the ground, he doesn't, and that, the fact that that site is actually an elevated site that it's placed on fill, I mean, you could physically see where it's built up a couple feet, he does not see where groundwater would be an issue and would fully support eliminating the underdrain portion of that work. So, those particular bid items account for about a little over $10,000 that we can essentially act as a change order on those items. So, that's, you know, and he would still offer his full, you know, his full warranty. This, this, this particular court would come with a 20-year warranty against cracking, heaving, shifting, whatever. And then also a 10-year warranty on the actual coatings itself, the color coating would be guaranteed for 10 years.
Mike, the specific items and the amount, we'll have to modify, obviously, this motion and amendment proposal. Where are those line items? I see there's about 25 line items here. Can you identify?
That would be items D1 and D2, which are the six-inch perforated pipe and the six-inch solid pipe.
Ninety-three fifteen and another 20.61, so roughly, roughly $9,400.
And then we would also be able to eliminate item N, although it's a small amount, for maintenance protection of traffic. That would have been related to hiring a police officer, sorry, Jim left, I guess, but for traffic control out on Wells Road when we tied into the catch basin of this piping system. So, we'd be able to eliminate that as well.
Okay. So, the, the amount is going to be roughly $134 for this project with those modifications?
Yes.
And, and we got 18 from USTA in the grant, and we had budgeted 90 for the project, correct?
We have 90 in the CIP budget, yes.
And how's that different, Jeff, from the CIP tennis repairs? I can't, I'm trying to remember. We had, we had an item that Kathy had maintained over the years.
Yes, we were, we're using that to repair a couple of the basketball courts at the elementary schools. We've done two of those with the repaving project, but the rest of them need a full depth removal, and then we're going to save some money to do Hamner, a Mill and Overlay at Hamner's Basketball, so there's some money left over. But there's not enough money in that line item to do what we need to do at the elementary schools, so we're going to shift it to the tennis court.
Okay. So, do we just need to get this exact amount for the motion?
Yeah.
So, maybe we can just...
So, when I, if I, if you add up lines, D1, D2, and N, I get $12,525, is that, is that right?
So, we can eliminate those, yes.
Okay. So, the new number would be... I have $131,861. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
And that, and Mike, basically, we see this source of funding on these. Would you take, I guess you would just eliminate that, that $12,525 from the CIP reserve?
No.
Or where would you, which of the line items would you take that off of?
I'd leave it in the basketball court repair.
Okay. Well, okay, because what, on the, on the motion, there's like $90,000 for CIP web tennis, $20,000 for CIP tennis repairs, $18,000 in outside grants, and then $17,000 in CIP reserve. That's what's written on the motion, so I'm wondering if you were, where would you remove the 12? Which of those four items, well, not, which of those four items would you remove it from?
I'd reduce the commitment from the tennis court basketball repairs.
Oh, okay. So, the $20,000 would come down?
Yeah, lower that number.
Okay.
Don's got a question.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. What was the original bid or, and actually, the estimate of the repair to the tennis court or redo of the tennis court?
Our original estimate was the $90,000 that we had, but we had anticipated it would come in, you know, within, within our budget originally, yes.
And now it's using asphalt.
Using just asphalt, yes.
Yeah, and this is a pretty significant increase in that. Now, I, let me ask a question about the ground in that area, because I know that certain fields at Webb have a tendency to be a lot wet.
Yes.
Is this, I understand, and I do understand that it is raised. However, over the course of time, is, you know, the potential for groundwater to accumulate underneath the slab, and is that, could that cause issues in the future and lead us to future problems?
It, it should not. What, what will basically happen is the asphalt will be removed. There is still gravel underneath that asphalt that exists on the court. What the underdrain system does is you put that around the perimeter of the court, it makes sure that the water gets out of that gravel layer that's right underneath the asphalt and gets dispersed.
I understand what that means.
Okay. In this particular case, with the post-tension concrete, it's a structural slab on top of there. So, it's essentially spanning from one end to the other and, and not depending on, on those drains. Even if, even if it got wet, it wouldn't matter to this slab, if that makes sense.
And then, just one more question. The CIP reserve, what is that generally used for?
These type of projects, as projects get completed and there's dollars left over, we just shift that to the reserve.
Into a reserve fund?
For this type of occurrence.
Okay. I'm not sure I can support this, but...
Along with that, Jeff, what is the current balance of that CIP reserve?
Somewhere around $100,000. We've used, we committed about $100,000 to next year's budget out of the reserve to do some additional projects, and then we have some projects that are finishing up, and we estimate that some of those dollars will go into the reserve. So, somewhere between $70,000 to $100,000, depending on how we end up, will be in the reserve.
Is there a priority listing of those projects, future projects?
The Capital Improvement Advisory Committee made that list for the budget, and we dedicated some of those dollars to what they approved.
Okay. Mike, what's the, when is this going to get done if it got approved?
The contractor can actually start and complete the concrete work this year. His recommendation, and it's weather-dependent, is the coatings themselves, and he would suggest deferring the actual color coating until next spring. This way here, the concrete will be set and cured. You, you need the... This way here, the concrete will be set and cured. You need the concrete to cure, you know, just to make sure all the moisture is out of it before you actually put the color coating on top of it.
And what's the warranty on the concrete?
20-year.
20-year warranty on the concrete, not cracking?
Not cracking.
Okay.
Start the clock.
Mike, what would the, now, when we were looking at asphalt, what was the, the cost was lower because it's, I assume it's not as expensive?
Well, the cost was, the bids, while we had estimated the $90,000, we still came in, I believe, there was about $120,000. So, Kathy, through her diligence, you know, went out and secured some additional funding in the grants, and we felt pretty comfortable with, you know, between the town money and the additional grant money that we would come in, you know, but again, market drives the prices. You know, we didn't physically change, you know, the dimensions or anything else on the tennis court when we rebid it. We just offered up an option to use the post-tensioning.
And if it were asphalt, do you get, would you get a warranty on an asphalt court?
We still asked for a 20-year warranty in the bid specs.
On asphalt?
On asphalt, yes. But in all likelihood, that contractor would have had to come back and do some patching and stuff to keep the court up.
Subsequently?
Yes.
And was it the, was it USTA that also recommended that we go this? I can't remember.
I think the USTA is, you know, they're looking down the road that this is probably the way to go.
But their grant was contingent upon the concrete.
Yes, their grant was a percentage, correct, Kathy? Yes.
Yeah, I remember that.
And we would have to do, would we need to do the curtain drains or the drains if we used asphalt?
If we used asphalt, we should do the curtain drains, yes.
Okay. So, if we use, I mean, if we, if we went asphalt, we couldn't take out the 12.5, right? Because we'd need the drains, and we wouldn't get the same level of grants from the USTA.
That's correct.
So, cost-wise, it's sort of comparable, and is this, are you saying this is a better product than asphalt?
I believe this will be a better product for us, yes.
More long-lasting?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Well, I want to thank, I mean, Kathy did a great job securing grants on this from both the US and the New England branch of the USTA. It's not usual that we get that much money from an outside firm to support infrastructure in town.
Any other questions? Mike?
Jeff, can you explain the difference between the CIP tennis repairs and then the CIP reserve? Do we collect funds and put it into the CIP tennis repair?
No, one of the CIP projects we've had are, is the tennis basketball court repair. So, we had some money in there to redo some of those outdoor basketball courts at the elementary schools. Two of those have been redone through the paving projects that we've done. The, then we have Hamner, which is, we have some money left over to mill and overlay that area. The other two need significantly more resources than what we could spend out of this fund. They need a full-depth removal and overlay, paving and everything else. So, we thought this consistent with the tennis court basketball repair line item, and that's different than the CIP reserve, which are excess funds left over from prior projects we can use to cover, to cover projects that need more funds to get done. So, it's kind of a revolving amount in the reserve fund.
We have schools with a couple basketball courts, but we're going to do these tennis courts instead?
Well, you need a lot more money to redo those basketball courts.
How much money?
I don't, we'd have to run it through the CIP.
Sorry.
Like I said, we did, the original amount to do them all was 30, but to mill and overlay them all, that wasn't enough. So, we've done a couple with the paving projects we've done at the schools. We'll just have to hit the CIP request again this year to do more.
Could we find out how much that is?
Sure.
I mean, I'd rather do that than the tennis courts if I didn't realize the schools had basketball courts that the kids could use or in bad repair.
Okay.
You're saying, Jeff, that we can't right now?
Well, you'd need to allocate resources to fully mill and overlay, but that request has not made it to CIP yet.
That's not in the CIP right now, is what you're saying?
No, the repair and patching was, but to do significant work on the remaining two, you'd have to mill them out, overlay and do them over again, like we've done at the other two where we've paved. It's a different scale of project.
No, I get that. I just, I would think that that would be more important. I don't know why that wasn't brought up before. I'd rather do that than this.
Kathy, the grant from USTA, is that, that's got some time clicking on it, I assume?
Yes, that does. Good evening. It has about a, one year from the date it was granted, which was June of this year, so 2014.
Okay. I think that's important relative to looking at, I mean, this was approved through CIP, obviously, as a project that we did in the budget.
Two years ago.
Yeah, two years ago. So, it's been on hold for a while. We're finally getting to it, and we went back out because it went over, and we're finally getting to that number. And assumably, some of that's influenced by time. I certainly hope we don't get cold feet on it, because if we don't do this, this project will definitely not happen, I suspect, and we'll lose that grant, so that would be important, I think.
Well, and just to comment, if we don't decide to do it, we would probably, as soon as possible, dismantle what's out there, because it's just unattractive and nasty. And that was kind of the option, redo them or take them out and not have tennis courts there. So, the commitment we've heard so far is to have tennis courts there.
Yeah, I mean, that's been asked and answered in CIP, so we went through this, right?
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, the council's voted in the past to support the courts here.
And it's not to say that the existing basketball courts at the schools are not usable. They're usable, but to do, redo them requires more money than what's in the CIP budget. And we'll just have to program those as we go along. They're usable, they're functional, they're safe. Just to redo them is going to need more dollars than we have in the budget. But we've done two of them with the paving.
Two basketball.
Right, we, yeah.
And that's still on the screen. We're still pursuing that.
Yeah, we'll have to come back with this year's CIP to pick one of the schools to program a full removal and replacement of those basketball courts.
Yeah, and I think one of the reasons we were hoping to get this done is we've got the high school tennis courts out of commission for another two years, probably, at least. And I know I went by Mill Woods a number of times where there are waits to get on courts. Kathy, we have, what?
Four at Mill Woods.
And then, two at Hamner? Or two?
Two at Standish.
At Standish? Okay, so we have the six courts in town, and I think there were clearly residents who couldn't get on courts this summer because, right, I mean, I...
Well, with the loss of the high school courts, that's eight courts, so, yeah, there was, there's always been a lot of use at the high school, so it has moved down to Mill Woods and to, a lot more people are using Standish courts now.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't get this done, we're going to have that situation for another two years in town, until the high school courts get back on. So, I think we need them. I wish the numbers were lower. I mean, I think when we first started looking at this, the numbers were not 140, well, even now, $131,000. Now, 18 of that is coming from USTA, so it's $113,000 of town money, more than you would have thought, more than I would have hoped for, but I think we need to get this done. It's not a particularly attractive part of town, and we're short courts.
Any other questions? Stop it.
Yeah, the, how long have those courts been out of service? Do you remember?
They've probably been closed five or six years. It may even be longer. I didn't bring my notes here with me, but we had to close them, obviously, because of the condition they were in. They just were not safe, and it's been a while since they've been closed. It may even be longer than that, but that's just a...
Yeah, I think it is.
I want to maybe even say, maybe eight or 10?
At least 10.
That they've been, they've been closed for a while, and they, they're, they just, they definitely need to be, that whole, that area needs to be cleaned up.
Yep, so are there other courts in town, the ones you referred to, do they need any additional work?
No, the Mill Woods courts and the Standish courts, over the years, we've gotten funding to do tennis court repairs, and we go in there and patch them and then color coat them again, and that maintains them.
Okay, and I'll be jumping around a little bit. So, the CIP tennis repairs line item, how much did we say, Jeff, is in that?
The original amount was 30?
30. And that's typically what we budget every year for that?
No.
No, sometimes it, we may not get it every year. It might be, and it might be 25.
Okay, somewhere around there. And there's 100 in CIP reserve.
Well, that, I'm not, don't quote me on it, it's, there's...
There's a significant amount there, or there's some amount.
Well, I don't consider, there's a little bit, okay.
Did we just tap into CIP reserve for something else recently?
We do all the time.
That we were under budget? I can't remember the last one we did, but...
We consistently tap into the reserve because there's projects that come in higher, just like this one. So, we try to keep a balance in there to make sure projects get completed.
Okay. I think one of the questions for me is that I'm just not quite sure that there's demand for these courts. Not talking short-term, because that's just a temporary fix, and it makes me wonder whether we should be waiting for the high school fields to come online first and then kind of reassess the demands for court time and then figure it out, especially since, you know, we're taking some of this money away from basketball courts at these other elementary schools, where if we start planning and squirreling this money away, we'd be able to tackle those one at a time.
I've received many calls about the Webb tennis courts not being available. I have neighbors and residents in town that will pretty much email me once a month on the status of the courts, and at the time, I was telling them, you know, we were going through the process and hoping to do it, but from my perspective, there's definitely a need for the courts in that area of town. And we've had a lot of, you know, residents that are looking, we've been able to tell them there's money in the budget for it, and we're hoping that in the near future, they would, we would be replacing these courts. So, from my department's perspective, we definitely see a need for those courts.
Okay, so even if it is approved, if I can just turn now to the plans, it calls for a 10-foot chain link fence, right? So, what's there now? It's significantly higher than that.
No, it's 10-foot.
It is?
Yes.
Okay, it doesn't seem like it. So, at one of the previous meetings, we had a resident come in concerned about softballs and baseballs going into those tennis courts as a safety issue. So, is there any, would there be any plan in this? I don't see it for that side of the fencing to be extended, and do we know what that would cost?
You'd be a significant cost to increase from a 10-foot and above. 10-foot is pretty much of a standard pole height. If you increase it to, let's say, 14 feet or 16 feet, you're going to have to put in deeper poles, much larger diameter poles, and possibly heavier gauge fabric as well.
So, has anybody looked at those concerns and, or not yet, that were raised?
Was not, that was not factored into our design, no.
Because the courts are, basically, how far from the backstop of those courts? It's very close. I don't know if it shows it on here, but...
Yeah, I don't, I don't...
But it's very close. So, all right, I think you've answered my questions. I mean, for me, I don't think now's the time to do this. I won't be supporting it tonight.
Other questions? Go ahead, Mike. This is probably for Kathy. When does the town typically take the nets down for winter?
Generally, I would say late October, November, depending on the weather and the weather forecast, if it's predicted to snow or get cold sooner or something like that. But you bring up an interesting question, because we've always, when Webb was up and running, that was the area, that was the courts that we left the nets up all winter, because there were requests, again, from people in that area, that could we leave one net up on one court for the winter, and we did do that.
Wonder if that could have led to a premature deterioration of that court, when people are in wintertime playing on ice or, you know, when it's frozen, might have progressed, any kind of deterioration of it. Just something to consider. So, if we wait for a little while, if we have any additional questions, more than likely, the contractor would still be able to start work this fall, and it would not interrupt any scheduled playing on any other courts, because by the end of the month, typically, most courts would be taken down, out of service.
I'm sorry, I did not, if you could repeat the question?
So, if we hold off on voting for the approval of this $131,000 tonight, we would still have enough time for a contractor to come in if eventually it is approved to put the concrete down, and then it would not, having those offline would not affect playing on any other courts, because typically, those courts would be offline anyways due to the winter weather.
I think the answer is yes, but I would say that if you don't approve it tonight, then if you would consider approving it, is there a second October meeting for council? Or is this, okay, because then you don't have the first November meeting, and then by that time, we've lost the fall to do the work.
And how long he will hold his price, we don't know?
Yeah, that's the other question. I don't know that he would hold his, his price is only guaranteed through the bid process for a certain number of months. It's not, it would not get us through to the spring.
How far would it get us through?
I can double-check, but typically, we hold the bid prices for 45 days.
Where are we?
But I think, you know, the two issues we're dealing with is holding the bid price, and then there are the temperature constraints for pouring the concrete. I mean, it's not a time issue. It becomes more of a temperature issue, because then we could be faced with additional costs that I'm sure he's not factored in there, for instance, heat blankets and things like that to keep the concrete warm.
Okay, thank you.
So, did I miss part of that? So, from start to finish, how long would the project be?
His contract is for 45 days.
So, it would take him 45 days to construct it?
Yes.
Whenever it started?
Yes.
So, for me, I just don't see why there's a rush then to do this now. I don't, nobody's going to really be able to play on it now, because by the time he's done, it's going to be the winter. There'll be very few people playing on it. So, even if we have to push it till later till we get some more information, especially on that safety issue with the fencing and how we, you know, how we tackle maybe these basketball courts in lieu of this and prioritize, then I just don't see the opportunity. My suggestion is let's just wait to get some more information back, and then we can address it at the next council meeting or after that, if that's not sufficient enough. Thanks.
Mike, your opinion, if we did wait until the next council meeting to vote on this, would, do you think this project would be able to get done in the fall? So, two weeks from tonight, it's the 20th of October. Would they have enough time to finish it up?
I mean, you're always taking a chance, you know? Recall back in 2011, we had, you know, 40 inches of snow in October at, you know, Halloween. So, we don't know what we're, what we're going to be up against in terms of the weather. And again, you know, that was an abnormal snow period, but it's more temperature that I'm concerned about and the cost to make sure that, you know, we're going to get the best product that we can, you know, for that concrete to cure and, you know, at its optimal.
What date did the bid come in? I mean, when does the...
Bids came in the 30th of September.
Okay, so we're only six days. So, we got, I know that they're temperature issue, but the bid doesn't expire before the next council meeting?
No.
Okay, I mean, it seems like there's some questions that are raised. I would, that we could get some answers to perhaps?
Can I get what the questions are so we make sure we are as prepared as possible?
Well, on the safety issue, I'd like to know, you know, what the additional cost would be for the fencing, or how that would be addressed?
The reality on that issue is, I mean, I don't know how high, with a foul ball, you almost can't go high enough. I mean, the issue is how close it is. My bet is if you went around town, there's sporting events going on relatively close to pretty much every baseball field. But I don't know if you could go high enough to remove that risk entirely, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, maybe.
But it's worth a look.
Maybe that's not the right location then for the tennis courts then, Steve? I mean, if you look at those other ones we have, I mean, let's talk about each one of them then. There aren't really any that I could think of that would be in harm's way, even in Mill Woods.
Standish.
Standish, because of the ball field. I mean, it really is, it's, when you have sporting facilities, there are sometimes, it creates some risk. But again, it's worth, it's worth a look into it, but I do think you're gonna, the, my sense is the answer you're gonna get is, you can't go high enough to remove that risk.
Can we get an understanding of how much it will cost to do those basketball courts?
Yeah, that is my other question.
Yeah. Okay. I mean, I'll make a motion to table it until the next meeting, to resolve these questions.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion to table this motion, original motion, in a second. Any questions about that? Do you guys have all the questions that Jeffy want to answer?
Yeah, anything else that comes up, we can certainly.
All right, so we have a motion to table, in a second. In front of us, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Opinions? Foresee?
Motion to accept the recommendation of the Weatherfield High School Building Committee, and increase the allocation for environmental abatement services of Fussin' O'Neill in the amount of three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars.
Second?
Okay.
All right.
Big tap. Mr. Thompson, help us through this one.
As you're aware, there are certain environmental considerations ongoing at the high school renovation project. And as we proceed through what we're calling destructive demolition, we're exposing additional asbestos materials that were previously encapsulated by hard construction. And as we do that, it requires abatement of those areas. So the chairman's here this evening, along with our consultants, to talk a little bit about that. Fussin' O'Neill is the building committee's monitoring consultant. They help plan the abatement, they monitor the abatement contractor, and make sure that the abatement is done appropriately. So we'll ask Chairman Fortunato, along with ONG and Fussin' O'Neill, to talk a little bit more about this.
Good evening, council members. Yes, thank you for the introduction, Town Manager. At the recent building committee meeting, we voted to add an additional, from the contingency, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars for additional work that needs to be done around the abatement that Jeff has just referred to. We have asked our contractor, Fussin' O'Neill, to prepare a budget for us that reflects work from now through project completion. This reflects addressing underground tanks, some of the project phasing revisions that were made. And we have our project manager here this evening, who can address that as well. Additional staffing requirements during holidays and unoccupied breaks. We are in an occupied building, and obviously, safety and health is our paramount concern for the students and staff in the building. And so the abatement work that is taking place, for the most part, is happening evenings, weekends, what is premium time for wages. And so that is one of the driving forces behind budget. Let me introduce Carlos from Fussin' O'Neill, and he can go through his budget with you in a little more detail, and answer questions that you have. Carlos?
Good evening. Carlos Texador from Fussin' O'Neill Environment Science. So I'm open to questions.
On anything?
Well, let me jump in. The original, the original amount a year ago was budgeted two fifty-four, and I know we've come across some other things. Can you take us through how we're getting to more than doubling that number? And identify for specific pieces of the project that can explain and inform us about such a significant change?
Sure. The initial proposal was given with the anticipation of having one project monitor on-site during the whole process of the remediation work. Unfortunately, it did not happen, so due to the fast-track scheduling of the project and the remediation work, we had two project monitors on-site from day one. SMI, which is the abatement contractor, also has two crews working at the building simultaneously in different locations of the building. It makes it very difficult for one project monitor to monitor this project, do all the testing that's required in such a fast-track time by himself. That is what led to having two project monitors on the site, except for one as we initially budgeted for.
And when did the two become reality?
Second week into the first phase of the project.
Okay, so that accounts for, obviously, it's one versus two. What portion of the cost is that? You've got sampling is probably about a third or a quarter of the project?
Correct. The sampling for post verification, sampling of the PCBs, is a large sum amount of the actual budget. In addition to having two individuals there, we also worked overtime hours, so you double that. Just, again, premium time working Thanksgiving Eve, Christmas Eve, working ten hours, twelve hours, thirteen hours a day for two individuals adds up pretty quick.
And that was not initially, obviously, anticipated, Chris?
That is correct, due to the fast-track schedule that was presented to us by the general contractor.
Also, can you talk a little bit about the additional unforeseen, I guess, materials that we're finding? We're still finding that.
Yes, we're still finding unforeseen asbestos, buried behind walls, buried under plaster ceilings, buried under four inches of concrete. So these areas obviously need prep time, need monitoring, need testing as well as the scope of work areas that we know of. So, you know, since day one, we've been running into materials that were unforeseen or unaccounted for.
All right, so if you look at the project where we are today, we've been in it almost a year. We've got two more years to go. And I think we all asked this question some time ago, but at what point will we say, or think we will be able to say, we've visited all the dark corners of this building, enough to say there was no more unforeseen findings? Is that a year out, or could that be as late as the last portion of the project?
That could be as late as the last day we do demolition.
Which is when?
My name is Gus Cotate. I'm the project manager for ONG Industries. We have about ten phases scheduled for the job, and the last phase will be in the summer of 2016. And at the beginning of every phase, we start with demolition first. So it will be until the end of the job.
So, help me understand a little bit, when you do projections, and this is more, I guess, for the project manager and less so for the testing group, but how do you sort of get to, I mean, what are the surprises here? We're learning, I assume, contrary to our initial estimates, that there's a lot more that we did not know about this building? I'm hearing, of course, and I think all of us have been, about documentation that appears not to have been in place. And the perception, I think, that, different from abatement, there was enclosure, I think, back in ninety-two. There seems to be some information that's now coming out that's educating us. Am I hearing that correctly? That in fact, there's more there that we thought had been taken care of in the previous renovation?
Yes, we're discovering these areas as we go.
Okay. And that's a big part of what's happening right now?
Correct.
And as an example, if you know the lecture hall, right, that's a graduated concrete floor. They found a tile floor under it. Now.
Yeah, buried under four inches or six inches of concrete.
You go through a wall, and you find a window that's encased, that is on no plan, no one would know that you have a window there. So just, it's odd what's coming up.
Yeah, and my questions aren't meant to be critical, other than trying to inform, because I think, obviously, the public has watched this project unfold. We have, obviously, gone back on at least two occasions to get additional support for asbestos. And PCB was a big part of our discussions this past spring and summer. It paved the way for an aggressive argument for space waiver modification, which helped us, obviously, close a potentially large gap. And, you know, I think the public is, I'm sure, going to pay attention to this story and want to understand, are we heading in a direction that we have it under control? I mean, we're on schedule. That seems to be very important, obviously. If we lose schedule, that's probably more financially perilous than these specific topics. But right now, we're going into contingency. We have,
Yes.
We had about a little over three million in contingency planned in the initial project, correct?
Between builder and, where are we?
We're about two-point-eight million in contingency.
Available to us. And we're about a million, a little over a million into it already? Assuming this gets approved. This is gonna take it over a million of contingency, correct?
Two-point-eight million in contingency available. Once this is approved, it's gonna go down to two-point.
What's the total on the contingency that we have expended to date? I think that's the question that the mayor is asking.
What's, I'm sorry?
The contingency that has been spent to date. Do you have that figured, Jeff? I know that's.
It doesn't have to be exact, but, you know, the flavor.
We probably, within the two-eight number that Gus talks about, is after this change order that you're considering this evening. So that's already out of the two-eight number. So we've probably spent somewhere three-quarters of a million out of the contingency, two million, somewhere around there? And we fully funded it when we revised the budget in anticipation of these types of things. That's what it's there for. Carlos, one of the things you had mentioned at the earlier meeting, and you may want to expound on this. The PCB abatement, SMI, was that included in their scope of work already?
Yes.
So is some of this, or is the majority of this related to asbestos that you're finding?
The majority is related to asbestos.
Okay. And just, I mean, I'm sure folks want to know, so why wasn't this, why wasn't this something that was anticipated or foreseen until now?
Because it's buried behind concrete walls, buried above plaster ceilings, or buried behind sheet rock walls.
Okay, so it's actually as you start demolishing.
As you do the demolition, correct.
And it was our understanding that the abatement for asbestos had been taken care of with the last renovation. So we knew that we would have some asbestos. We were carrying dollars for that. But the amount that has been found, and that just can't be predicted, as they say, when they open up a wall. We're pretty good with the PCBs. I mean, if we get any additional surprises, we're pretty much covered. But you would say we've pretty much planned and budgeted for that, would you not?
Correct. The only unforeseen for the PCBs was the restilling room and gym B in the first phase of the work.
Mike, real.
When you talk about abatement in prior renovation, could it have been that abatement twenty, thirty, forty years ago for asbestos would have been simply encapsulating it in concrete anyways? So it's of no fault of those who said that it was abated in prior renovations?
Yes.
So it's not like you guys are stumbling upon, you know, a pile of asbestos tiles sitting in the corner of a room that's locked? You're actually looking at encapsulated asbestos that prior renovations or prior projects had adequately taken care of at the time?
That's correct. These are not piles of materials that were abated and hidden in, behind walls or ceilings. These are materials that are in place, but behind enclosed substance or materials.
So they did take some effort prior to abate these asbestos, I don't even know what they are, tiles, walls, paint?
Well, they didn't abate it if they left it in place, they just encapsulated.
Encapsulated it, correct. So at the time, they did do what was necessary to lower the risk of asbestos exposure?
I wasn't there at the time to really comment on what they did and why they did it. I can just comment on what was found and what was discovered. But yes, encapsulant is a known practice in the field. If, you know, the funds aren't available to remove asbestos, so sometimes they encapsulate it by, you know, pouring concrete over it or putting another floor over it.
I just don't want the building committee, or you guys up here, speaking to say that, you know, this is coming as a complete and total surprise, and it's just that there's asbestos there at the fault of a person or a contractor in prior renovation, you know, not properly taking care of the asbestos. They actually did what probably was recommended at the time.
Right, we're not faulting anyone. We're just saying that in order to complete our renovations, we have to deal with it now. There's no way around it now.
Okay. Thank you.
So if it was encapsulated, then couldn't we assume that a lot of other areas are also encapsulated? And that we might have an issue in the other parts of the building?
Yes.
And that's what this.
This'll take care of all of that?
That is correct.
From a monitoring and testing perspective.
What's the cost to get rid of it?
Well, we still have more than fifty percent of the budget left for the demo contractor. Now, there's a change order tonight for some, from additional monies for the demo contractor, but as we move through the demolition, there may be additional expenses for demolition. This is to cover the monitoring and testing throughout the rest of the project. So there may be additional requests for funds later on for actual demo and physical abatement of the material.
So there probably will be, if we're thinking that this stuff is contained in the building somewhere. So I would expect that we would see probably some large amounts more money have to be approved to get rid of that?
I would anticipate additional requests for funding for abatement as the project continues, yes.
And I think the PCB issue is already in the scope of the work. But there's the additional asbestos side of things is not within that scope, is my understanding.
So with your kind of professional opinion, I mean, maybe in a follow-up meeting, if you went through the billing, could you do some type of estimate of what could be encapsulated? Since we are gonna pay you that much more money?
Yeah, we can.
Well, you have, to some extent, done that with the quote, the price that you've given us for the additional monitoring that has to be done, the additional testing. We have some ideas now, based on the experience of what's been uncovered, of where to look, where to consider that there will be the need for additional abatement work. But keep in mind, there was a considerable amount of testing done on this building beforehand that did not show up. that did not show us asbestos being an issue. So, again, as we open up these, you know, walls and floors, we all just have to be aware that we, you know, of what we're going to find. So, I think, you know, that's been the shift in thinking for us as the committee, now that we really need to look at this building as having more asbestos than what was originally, um, told to us through the testing. Now, with that said, everything is contained. There is no risk to anyone in that building. I want to underscore that point, particularly for the public who's watching this evening, and that any abatement work takes place when we don't have children in the building.
So, let me just go back. This, this additional three thirty-seven, to your point, and to Mike, uh, Hurley's question. You, you've done, I assume, you're doing some estimating here based on what you're now finding, and this additional amount of money is, is taking you forward. Is this just covering what we currently know, or is it also extrapolating an estimate about what we anticipate we are probably going to find?
Correct.
It's both?
It's both, correct.
Okay. And, and, and so, and again, this, I'm not asking this question or making the suggestion, uh, that there, or this is any kind of finger pointing, but, but I do think if we're talking about if there was containment or enclosure, that in the previous renovation, there would have been referenced, even though the standards have obviously changed now, and that was one of the things we heard this summer, is the standard for, like PCB, for example, when we talked about the bricks. You know, even four years ago, you could remove the windows, and you didn't have to worry about a certain distance back into bricks for leaching. Now, we're saying we had to take out all those bricks. That standard changed. But, if we were talking about asbestos, I assumedly, back in the ninety-two renovation, if there was containment strategies put in place, the containment would have been inspired by awareness of materials. And that's what I'm not hearing. So, when I ask that question, it isn't a point of finger at a contractor from ninety-two, but assumedly, there would be some documentation that would have given O and G some heads up that, yeah, we did do some containment over in the gym, or we did some containment in the weight room, or we did some containment in the floor under the auditorium, which was satisfactory at the time, the standard was acceptable to contain, but it would have had, assumedly, some documentation that said, we did do that, because we knew there's materials there, which would lent maybe some credibility to our numbers being a little more accurate now, which, again, is not critical of anybody, but I'm, I'm understanding that is, is definitely missing.
Well, and the town seems to be lacking a lot of drawings, a lot of...
Yeah, I mean, you know, we're coming across walls and windows that nobody documented. I mean, I, and so, I'm just making that point, 'cause I think in terms of educating the community that's looking at this unfolding story, I think they, you know, it is important to say that, that I think there is some documentation that has been troubling, I think. And, and it's helping us inform it now, but I, as we go for this, this additional amount tonight that I'm sure we're going to approve, is taking a little bit of a, a venture down the path, like, yeah, we know we're gonna find it here now, and we know our, we're being informed and educated about what we're finding, you're extrapolating that into the rest of the footprint to assume there's more coming.
Correct.
Okay. So, and I think that's important, because, you know, we want to find the end of the road here, and I know Jeff Bridges has, obviously, shared that we're, we're safely still in contingency. Most importantly, we're still on time, and we don't want to overpaint the picture rosy, but I think we're still on track. This is somewhat expected. To the extent it is, it seems like it's more, but we're, we're prepared for that, to some extent.
And, and if I may add something, and, and, and that's really what, uh, it, it's not disappointing, and it's a reality, but the work that's going on onsite, the completed areas, the improvements that have already been made are being extremely well-received. So, it's an environmental problem, it's a mitigation problem, it's an abatement problem, but in, it's, it's not the character of the project, it's not the major story of the project.
Absolutely, and we're doing everything we can to clean, so that future building committees don't have to deal with it.
And document.
Something new, I'm, I'm certain of that, but, um, actually, could, could we take a moment just to have Gus talk with you about where the project is in terms of milestones? You've all seen the field, right? You've seen the bleachers and...
Yeah, before we, before we launch it to Happyville, I just want to finish this, I just want to finish this topic. You know, then we could go to happiness, but, you know, is there any other questions on this topic?
I still have the same question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
So, we're gonna pay whatever, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand for your services. We know where there could potentially be asbestos or other things that we might have to take out. Again, we don't know what that, we could potentially kind of estimate what that cost is to take those out. Is that correct?
Uh, we can.
Like, on the high side?
Yeah.
Like, if it's a million dollars, or, I just would want to get, like, some understanding of where, where that might fall.
Well, I think, I think Dee is gonna get us some of that too, Mike, to your question. I have the same question. I think the, uh, four D is gonna address current abatement proposal costs, right? So, we'll get to that as well, but that, that we assume...
Current, though.
Well, but I think it's also reflecting this additional monitoring and ex, estimates of additional work, correct, Gus?
Well, I don't think the SMI, it looks to the future. I think it, we still have, I think that's a different number.
That's the current phase that we're in.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it would just be nice to know on the high side what we're looking at.
Yep, I agree with that. I think we, well, I will answer that. What, any other questions on the three thirty-seven, so we can, um, help Fuss O'Neil finish up his, uh, sigh of relief to get this done? None? Okay. Um, we have a motion and a second in, in, in front of us this evening for an additional three thirty-seven for monitoring of project work that is currently in the pipeline and anticipated. Uh, we've had discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Chris, I know you want to stay up and talk a bit about the project with Gus, that's fine. Why don't we do that now, before we go on to Dee? So, go ahead.
Okay, very good. Um, Gus, do you want to give an update? Well, first of all, school opened, right? We didn't have any difficulties, for the most part.
No, things are going well.
Things are going well. The new traffic pattern, uh, is, is working well. Uh, I have gotten some feedback about some lighting concerns in that area. The permanent lighting has not gone in there yet, but I think you're working to get some additional temporary lighting. Good, good, just to, to keep that area illuminated. Um, of course, the fields, uh, anyone who's been down to Coton Field and been on the bleachers, um, the PA system, is that still our temporary, or is that the permanent one?
We're still working off of the old PA system in the school for now, and as we start to turn over phases, we'll, phase, we'll, we'll get into the new system and take the old parts out.
So, there's still some additional work to be done in the field area. Um, you saw the, the arch, the arch did get up, and, and we were happy to do that for the townspeople. Uh, but important milestones coming up with, uh, the gym, with the addition area, so I'll have Gus talk with you about that.
Um, we're currently working on the Phase One, um, schedule, which is the turnover of the new, your new gymnasium, uh, the bandroom, choral, and the, the new media center, uh, which are scheduled to be occupied, uh, this coming December. Um, so, that's going well. Currently, we're finishing up the, some of the above-ceiling mechanicals. We're gonna start with ceilings, paints, floors, so we're into the finishes of these spaces. Um, the other area that we started to work on, um, this summer, is, um, what we call Phase Two of the project, uh, which is the renovation of the admin, uh, the old admin area, uh, science wing, culinary arts. Uh, so, right now, that's, uh, in the demo phase, uh, on the bottom floor, and on the top floor, we're starting to, uh, come in with the mechanicals, um, and, and work our way down. Uh, and that phase is scheduled to be turned over in, at the beginning of the year, at the end of January, um, turnover during the February vacation. Uh, we're also completing the, the elevator tower. Um, the new elevator just arrived today, and, um, they're gonna start to install it, that's scheduled to be turned over at the end of October. Um, and at the same time, we're working on the new boiler room, uh, the mechanicals, we're actually gonna turn, uh, start at one of the new boilers, uh, at, on Friday. So, a lot of things are moving in the right direction.
Thank you, Gus.
I had a, just a, kind of, a couple comments. Um, you talked about the lighting outside, there was a few people, it's on the backside that the, there was a, I think, a generator over by the tennis courts with lighting at one of the football games, but there was no lighting on the farther side of, over by, um, the Chico Field in between?
By the, by the front parking lot, by the west side entrance.
Yeah, and I think a few people had fallen, I don't think they got hurt.
I, I brought in, I brought in another, um, light plant, um, on Friday.
Okay, that, that'd be good, 'cause I know there's probably a few soccer games and football games that are gonna go on before you get the permanent lighting up. And then I did hear some concerns about the electricity still in the snack bar. I don't know what they were, but that, it might not be always working the way it's supposed to be.
I'll look into it.
Just when I was at the game, that was all. I don't know if there's any, I didn't go back there and check it, but if...
I don't know why not, Mike.
Um, we're also gonna start resurfacing the track, um, this week, um, so, we put orange fence around the entire track, um, tomorrow, we're gonna have some signage too, uh, so that's gonna be closed for, uh, at least three weeks to get the resurfacing done, um, but it will come out nice at the end, it's gonna be a whole, brand-new, uh, red track, uh, new lines.
Yeah, if we could just stress that point with the public, that we really do need them to stay off of the track. I know a lot of people use it for exercise and that we, but we need to keep it free of, of, uh, anyone, so, you know, it can dry and cure properly, so, uh, we appreciate your help just reinforcing that.
There's some retired Secret Service guys that are available, I think, that might be able to watch it for you.
Maybe not, I, I don't know. I don't know if they could do it, but, you know.
Yeah.
So, whatever you can do to, to help reinforce that point with the public.
Very good.
And then we'll let you know when it's open, and so, you know, folks can resume using it.
So, Gus, I know you said at the science wing, so the, the fifth-floor science area and, and those clabs, those will be turned over for the next semester?
Uh, the...
February. So, February of, uh, next, but, so, next year?
That's the schedule.
You can see, we have a very tight schedule, that's why we keep the work moving, so...
I assume when school's in session, somebody from the school would be looking after the track a little bit, like, if the gym people are outside?
Totally.
Trying to keep people, I mean, during the school, when it's in session, I'm assuming we could get people off of there, and then after is the, really, when the problem would...
Yeah, weekends and stuff like that probably is a problem. It's, it's, it's all closed and gated, but people get in, right? I mean, that's the concern, people will go in anyway?
Y- y- yeah, and, and, you know, I was over there yesterday, and there was a gate that was open, and it wasn't officially closed yet, so, I think it'll give them another day. But, you know, we're going to have signage, and, but unfortunately, that doesn't always deter folks, so...
Okay. Thank you. And we're gonna move on to, I know you're probably staying for four D, so...
Yeah.
Yep, uh, let's move to four D.
Okay. Motion to accept the change order from Southern Middlesex Industries for hazardous, hazardous material abatement at the Weatherfield High School in the amount of forty-two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven dollars and seventy-six cents.
Second.
Thank you. I know you're here to, I jumped in front, but you're here to explain that to us, so go ahead and follow.
Do you want to do us something?
Sure. Um, during the current phase that we're working in, um, the administration wing, uh, we, um, we discovered, um, some, um, additional unknown asbestos, um, material, um, which in the two-hundred admin, uh, there's, um, asbestos-containing material in the chase, and, and the one-hundred custodial, uh, which is the basement of the building, uh, there's asbestos-containing material, uh, in the plaster ceiling, um, and, um, in the one-hundred dishwasher room, and stair twelve, asbestos-contained, uh, material fittings, wall, in walls and ceilings, uh, old lecture hall, uh, also asbestos-containing fitting, fitting and buried, uh, in the buried floor slab. Um, so, all, all these areas, we, we need to remove the asbestos in order to be able to install the, the new, um, construction material, whether, whether it's a pipe hanger, uh, we need the, the plaster ceiling out, uh, and the, the asbestos fitting, so we can put the new material in. Uh, in the lecture hall, we discovered the floor, under the floor, uh, so that's gonna be removed, um, for the, at the footprint of the new footings that we have to pour in there. Um, and once we pour the footings, we put the, the steel columns on them and, and, and start the construction. Uh, so, these are all the, the spot areas that we found that where we need that removed, uh, so we can continue with the...
So, the, the lecture hall, the concrete floor, it's below the concrete floor, there's tile that has asbestos. And you're saying just the footings have to be abated? The area by the footings, not the whole floor?
The footprint of the new footing, that's what we're doing.
Okay, 'cause you're opening that up, obviously, you're going below that tile. So, just that, and just, you know, just out of curiosity, it, you're, and this is probably Carlos as well, you're, so each time we go into an area and we do some exploration or opening, there's automatic testing of the materials that we look at every time?
Yeah, when we find it, I automatically call Carl, Carlos, um, and have him...
But it's, it's to the eye? Your contractors know, know, when they get there, this looks like something that...
They call me right away.
It looks suspect, is what you're saying?
Yeah. Well, we can have Carlos address that too, because there are different types of testing that takes place based on quantities found, and it's a difference between testing onsite or sending it to a lab. It's a large driver of this, uh, you know, project, and what we need to get done over the Columbus Day holiday. There's a lot of abatement work, and it's critical that these folks finish up from SMI, so the other trades can get in, so you can have the electrician in there, um, and, and all those other trades. So, again, the sequencing here is, is, uh, critical. But, um, Carlos, you want to talk about the, the testing, and also the, the fasteners that, um, are in the, the lecture hall, up in the, um, the ceiling there, right? We've got them there. That's not something that would have been anticipated without opening up that area, am I correct on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. Could you talk, though, about the, the testing, just so folks understand that?
Sure. Uh, so, during this phase of the work, uh, that this, uh, change order that SMI has requested, um, we're, we're trying to do all this work during the, uh, period, uh, discovery, what, what, yeah, Columbus Day, here, October, and it's a, it's a three-day, maybe two-day period where we plan to do all this abatement work. Um, it consists of, uh, asbestos remediation, and, uh, it consists of some PCB remediation. Um, the testing requirements for some of this work, uh, will require us to take these samples out to a, 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 accredited lab for TEMs, just based on the amount of sampling of materials that we have to remove. In order for us to expedite these samples, we're gonna have to, uh, request for the lab to be open during that weekend. Um, we anticipate getting these samples to them on Sunday, which has already been set off, so they're gonna open shop for us on Sunday, in order to read these samples, um, Sunday, maybe, what, two or three o'clock in the morning, so we, we could get a clearance or reaccompany test and complete it, in order to open up the school on Tuesday. So, that, that's just one, one area. We have, uh, eight to ten other areas, uh, that we will be running what we call PCM air sampling in. Those are in-house, we do those ourselves, so we're gonna have eight, eight different containments. This is why we need two project monitors. There's no way one guy's gonna be able to get all this accomplished during this two-day, three-day, uh, period. Um, so, those samples we'll read onsite, but again, it's, it's, it's a lot for one individual to run eight or ten PCMs and a TM, and do post-verification samples all at the same time. So, it, it is one of the driving, uh, facts as, as to why our proposal is what it is.
Thank you. Questions? This one's pretty straightforward, I think. Okay, thank you. Um, we have a motion and a second in front of us with respect to this change order for abatement for SMI. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you. Thank you for bearing with us, Ed, for being here as well, uh, members of the committee. Christine, I know you've been putting in hundreds of hours, we sure appreciate it. Sure you're learning more than you ever dreamed.
Yeah, we gotta talk about a oil tank.
Yeah, do you want to talk about the tank?
Go ahead.
Uh, Mike Turner, uh... So, the, um, the tank that is, um, under the building and, what is that, walkway?
The ramp.
Ramp, the ramp, yes. Um, so, as you are aware, there was a report of odor in the, uh, Winter Greenwood's area, and after various investigations, and the Department of Environmental Protection being called in, there was no conclusive outcome as to the source of the spillage. DEP worked with Board of Ed and town staff to look at the various tanks on the property.
There's the one tank near the main entrance that was scheduled to come out. They had us take it out sooner, it was inspected and was found not to, to be the source. Um, the tank that is under the ramp and building was planned to be filled as part of the renovation project. There had been testing done, um, early on by Environment Ed that gave no indication of any leak, any contamination. That's why the tank was just being filled. Uh, we have been told by DEEP that we need to empty the tank, to have it scrubbed and then filled. And then there will be additional testing. Again, they don't know if it's the source, it's all precautionary. That's the information that I have. Our staff certainly can answer additional questions, I can try to answer additional questions that, uh, that you might have. Um, I attended the meeting with the DEEP officials who are working very closely with our staff. Uh, Anthony Dignotti, I think, has really been the champion from the town side. He's done, um, an excellent, uh, an excellent job. They're not telling us that the tank has to come out. Um, the steps that I just mentioned are, uh, would have to be followed in terms of it, you know, being emptied, cleaned and filled. Um, staff, do you, is there anything?
Well, if I might.
Or any questions?
Just to answer Mike's question earlier, the, this project always included the final remediation of the tank. And at the time, it was anticipated it was half-full of sand, we were just gonna fill it with the rest of the way of sand and that's in the contract. Now that we have this leak issue, they're gonna make us pump it out, make sure it's clean and then fill it again, just to guarantee that there's no product left in this tank. And that's the difference.
Are there other, there must be other tanks around then, 'cause we have, seem to have a problem at Follybrook, right?
Well, we've removed all the other tanks, so this is the last one on, on the site.
That we know of, or do we know of every single tank?
Based upon the Phase One, there were three tanks and we've accounted for all three of them.
What, uh, you're thinking what, Mike?
Well, if there's some source of oil running into Follybrook, then it must be coming from somewhere.
Well, there was also this transformer issue.
Yeah, but they, I thought they tested that and found that that was, there was some transformer oil.
There was some transformer oil, but it was mixed.
Other, right.
There was some other, it was, it was a mixed fluid.
Yeah.
And we're finding, there's a possibility of there being oil, fuel oil as well as transformer oil.
Right.
So they're making us remediate the site that much faster. So the other tank was gonna come out in a later phase, we did it now. This tank was gonna be filled with sand, we're just gonna do it now. And then if we continue to have discharge out in the storm sewer, then we're gonna have to look for another source, but we'll just keep going after it.
And so because of the spill that has occurred, DEEP is requiring an expert spill containment agent come in. So the contractor that we have Spazarini that would be filling the tank, um, is not qualified to do that. And, uh, they will be opening the tank, uh, but we need to have, um, another firm come in. So Jeff is working with Carlos from Fussin' O'Neill to create a scope to go out for, uh, for a bid and to be able to take care of this, um, probably over a couple of weekends because the equipment that's used is very loud. Um, the hose is gonna have to run through the building, it will take some time to, you know, pull out that sand, um, mix that is in there. Uh, but DEEP is satisfied that we're all working on a plan to resolve this, so we're not being compelled to do it tomorrow, um, but certainly to, you know, to move as quickly as possible.
And provide the necessary documentation that these have been done.
Okay.
Just one more thing.
Got any good news for us, Chris? Good, go ahead.
That's it.
I just had one question with the, um, filling in a, well, first of the taking out of the sand, slurry, oil-water mixture and then fill, replacing it with concrete. What roughly is the cost of that?
We don't know yet. That's the RFP that's gonna go out.
Okay. And then additionally, is there a separate RFP for the environmental, um, uh, crew that's gonna be taking, that's required by DEEP to take a look at the, um, you know, drainage?
So the, the.
Environmental Services?
The testing piece?
Testing, yeah.
That's, will be a combination of, uh, Fussin' O'Neill and, and DEEP because DEEP has staff who can do some testing as well. But honestly, until they get in there and see the tank, uh, you know, DEEP will tell us what additional testing's going to be needed, so.
And what, what monitoring?
Monitoring.
Will be necessary until any kind of discharge is stopped?
Yeah, do, do you wanna talk about that, just your experience on similar projects? What may be perhaps to expect?
Uh, the goal, the goal of Connecticut DEP right now is to respond to the, um, a report, a spill report. Uh, and they're looking for closure. Um, and, and what they recommended was, as Christine explained, uh, removing the contents and the media in the existing tank, uh, steam cleaning the tank and filling it with, uh, concrete. That would close this release. Um, they also wanna see three months down the road if this accomplishes, um, any more oil going down through the brook. Depending on what they see and what they observe, um, they will most likely come back and say, well, yeah, this didn't solve the problem, uh, we have to do more investigation and find out why we're still getting these spills into the, into the brook. Or right now, uh, we're satisfied with what we see, um, and we'll, we'll keep it an open issue. But this will never be a closed issue because you have basically a tank still under, 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 under your building here.
The one good thing is that, you know, we're not a community of wells, so that is one less concern that DEEP has in this situation.
Is, uh, is Environmental Services still on the site?
Yes.
And they'll be there indefinitely?
They, they placed all the, they are a licensed spill contractor, so they responded at Fred's request. They have them on as an on-call, um, to dispel, the initial notification from DEP, so.
And that's.
They put the booms in, into the, at the end of the out, uh, the stormfall.
Right.
And they are maintaining those until we, they get further direction from DEEP.
The RFP, they may or may not be the contractor who can.
Right, right, I understand. Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your updates and information. Okay, well, our last bid is 4E.
Motion to award the rock salt bid to American Rock Salt and DRVN, cost per ton of sixty-nine dollars and forty cents and seventy dollars respectively.
Second.
Jeff? Uh, thank you, Mr. American Council. Um, Sally's here this evening to talk about rock salt, but it's that time of year. Um, and one of the benefits to the way we do it is, uh, a lot of towns use a regional bid, which last year, uh, didn't function as effectively as it should have. Uh, we use our own contractors and we have redundancies that, you know, we had some shortage times and we were never out, though.
That's correct.
So it, it kinda helps, so, hold us out.
So this year, uh, once again, we put together an RFP to go out to multiple vendors for rock salt. One of the things to note is that we use a pure rock salt. We do not use a slurry and treated salt mixture, which a lot of the other towns do. And so we, um, went out for bids to four vendors. We do like to split it up amongst a couple of vendors to make sure that we're belts and suspenders when it comes to this type of product. Um, the prices have gone up this year, as noted, um, and it's gone up across the board, uh, throughout every vendor. Um, and so right now, we have put forth to you to go and award the contract to both American Rock Salt and DRVN Enterprises.
Questions? Jeff?
Um, what did we budget for salt?
Fifty thousand dollars based on, um, approximately three tons of rock salt. I, we have, over the past three years, we have used more than that, but you don't know what the weather's gonna hold.
Did we, did we budget based on what we paid last year, the, the fifty-ish dollars?
The fifty thousand dollars has pretty much remained consistent in the budget over the past few years and then any differentiation has been made up at the end.
Okay, now, I'm looking at what the material that we got to make sure I understand. What's the hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars a year that's from ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen and fourteen?
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, it's a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, not fifty.
Okay.
I was incorrect.
Okay, all right, so, um, so the budget was based on essentially what we paid last year. Now we're gonna pay twenty or twenty-five percent more, so the only way we'll be on budget is if we use less, you know, less than what we.
Yes.
Okay, and did we come into the year with many, much in terms of supplies?
No, in fact, we made the conscious decision, you don't want to try to keep any of that stuff over the summer and for long periods of time. So when the winter started to wind down last year, we had some in reserved and we ended up using it during the fluke April storm that we had.
Okay, okay, so th- this is an area that unless we have a mild winter, we, we know will be over. I mean, most likely we'll be over budget on, just because of the change in, in prices, which.
That is a very good chance.
Okay. Which could be in the fifty, if I just multiply it by twenty-five percent or so, it could be up in the forty, fifty thousand dollar range. Okay. I mean, there's nothing we can do about it, but, um.
Right, and that's, you know.
That's the, that's the bid.
That's, that's New England.
Yeah.
What's driving the salt price, Sally, you know?
Supply and demand.
It, it is, really?
Yeah, basically, based on the last few years, um, the amount of towns that have required and, and have used salt and then people have gone from a salt and sand mixture to less sand, uh, more of the salt, more of the treated salt. And also, you know, people are just kind of hedging their bets and so it really does come down to supply and demand.
Yeah. And, and we can't store that much.
Right.
Our barn is very small. Particularly now that we moved to a straight salt mixture, we go through it that much faster.
Correct.
Right, right. I mean, I remember last winter, there were towns that just flat-out ran out, right? Which fortunately, we didn't.
We got close a couple times.
We got close, we were also very fortunate in that because we do go out and negotiate our own contracts, we weren't going out through a third party and so we really held the, uh, our vendors' feet to the fire. Um, and where, you know, we did, as Jeff said, we came close, but we didn't completely run out.
Okay.
Very good. Mike?
Are we guaranteed as much as we need at these prices?
We are, we've also built in that there are penalties if they do not provide the needed salt, but that's also why we, um, go out and, and contract with more than one vendor.
And one of the vendors is from Weatherfield?
Yes.
And all the other vendors are from out-of-state?
Uh, well, they're from out-of-town, yeah.
Well, it looks like they're all vendors that are from out-of-state and have stockpiles.
And their stockpiles are here.
In, around the town.
But the, the thing to note with the Weatherfield vendor is that he is part of the distribution chain, he's not part of the actual.
Pile.
Yes, but actual pile, so it gives us kind of both ends of it.
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? Very good. Uh, we have the most, the, thank you, Sally. Uh, we have that, um, introduction. Uh, Laura, should just, uh, we were just formally introducing this for a public hearing, I assume, at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh, minutes, regular scheduled meeting of the fifteenth, motion to accept.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Uh, any changes, additions, modifications, objections? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Extentions? Thank you. Gus, I assume you have to come back up for public comment. No, please, go right ahead, it's your turn.
Good evening again, Gus Colantonio, Sixteen Morrison Avenue. Uh, Mr. Bob Young, thank you for your support for the stop sign, but to my knowledge, the town does not need a waiver. Why? Before the construction, we had three-hundred-forty feet intersectional side distance. And that was good for thirty, thirty-five. Right now, we have two-hundred-thirty-two feet, which is less than twenty-five miles per hour. And the posted speed is twenty-five, so theoretically, it's not safe. But on top of that, the eighty-fifth percentile on the street goes thirty-one miles per hour. That means fifteen percent of all the traffic goes above the thirty-one miles per hour. So that intersection is much or less, less safer than the way it was. So I think we need to stop sign and Hillcrest Avenue does not. And a different, uh, question now. I did ask the question a couple months ago, I guess, you know, whose responsibility is it to fix the washout just west, no, east of Tifton? There is still existing pavement out there. And I tell you, when I, when I hear all these problems because of previous construction, that was not really done, things correctly, someday, I figure that somebody important is gonna live on the street. And when they say, how come I cannot keep the grass green on the snow shelf? And somebody's gonna dig it out and they're gonna see existing pavement under there. Matter of fact, the plan's called for removing existing pavement. And by the way, existing pavement or pavement does not just consist of bituminous. It consists of base and sub-base, that's the pavement that should have been removed and filled back with topsoil or good fill, and it was never done. Now, let me ask a question again. Whose responsibility is it? Is it the town or the property owner to fix that washout? I question it and I appreciate it, on Marsh Street, I guess, or about that tree cable guide railing and anger that was removed after two years. It was done within two days, it was good. It was good, do I have to wait two years before this washout is gonna get fixed? Uh, Walker Hill Road, last year, I guess, I asked Beverly, coming out of Beverly, looking in a southerly direction. I was told by the town manager, right here in the public hearing, that was good only for twenty-five miles per hour. I believe that the speed limit on Walk, Walker Hill Road was forty and it was changed to thirty-five, which was good. But according to the standard intersectional side distance, if coming out of Bever, Beverly Road is only good for twenty-five miles per hour and the speed is twenty-five, there is something wrong with that. But anyway, I'm still coming every meeting and hopefully someday I'll get an answer, thank you.
Thank you, Gus. Mr. Young?
Good evening again, Robert Young, Twenty Copper Mill Road. Um, we are currently in what they call political, uh, season. That means we're seeing signs out on the streets and I'm seeing several signs here and there that are on what we call the snow shelf. Now, in the past, when citizens have, have also put out initiatives and gone forward with signs, are signs if they went on the snow shelf by the property owner, you folks would pull them out. I would hope that you would be pulling out the signs that we see on the snow shelves. I know it's against the grain to go against the bosses, whether it's Democrats or Republicans, but they should be treated the same as citizens. If your sign is on the, on the, on the snow shelf, it should be pulled. Um, tonight, you were just talking about, um, uh, the tennis courts over at Webb School, Webb Elementary School and, uh, cost of a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars and so forth, and which I'll have to listen to the rerun of the show since I still have Cox. But, uh, I'll have to listen to that to pick up more information on it. But the fact remains, a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand dollars you wanna spend. And here we are, we, we wanna, we have so many tennis courts in this town. We have, I mean, right around the corner, I think it's called Cedar Street, there's some kind of park over, up that road. There's, you know, we're, we're close, everything is so close, down the street is Emerson Williams School. Down the street is Emerson Williams School. I don't know what they have down there for courts or whatever, but we have courts all over Creation, whether it's tennis, basketball, so forth and so on. We shouldn't be spending any money on, on, on that tennis court at that school. We should tear it up, have, um, Mr. Turner come in with his equipment, clean it up, and put topsoil in there and put plants. I think that'd be a better investment. And have someone, someone who go in there and, and, and plant flowers and bushes. Throw them in there. It'd be a heck of a lot better than have a sea of asphalt, 'cause now you have a parking lots, then you're gonna have more with the par, with the, uh, tennis courts. You know, bring some greenery to it. I think that would be a smart move. And you did complain about not having the money to go forward with it. And I can tell you this, you should think what I've talked to you about in the past. You had, you gave twenty-five or thirty-five thousand dollars away from ATT for putting, they wanted to put a U-verse or a box on the, up at the high school. That money disappeared. It didn't come into our treasury and be used for our citizens. It went for special interests to take care of your friends and your buddies. Now, you talk about you need money. How about the Wilkes Farm sale? That was a lot of money, and that disappeared too. It went to the Golf Road developer. Gone. Money we could have used. It didn't go in our treasury. How about the Standish House? The rental for whoever's in there, it's not coming to our treasury. It's going somewhere else. But we need money. How about the Kenny Center? That's a gorgeous building. How much rent do we get from that? Zip, right? And then we have all the liabilities that go with it. How about the Solomon Wells Home? Do we get rent from that? No, it goes somewhere else. Get zipped. We get a lot of zips, thanks to council members in this town, whether it's current or prior. And it should have, that money should be, those council members should have been working for the citizens and putting the money and making sure the money gets into our treasury to help our finances. Instead, you let it go to others. Then tonight, we hear there's a great presentation about the high school. And I'm sitting back here, and you know, you had your great experts come up here back before you went forward with the high school with the dollars. They knew exactly. Everybody was an expert that got up here and spoke on behalf of promoting it. And now, look what we have. We have overruns. I don't know how much the overruns are gonna be. You oughta go get an extra ten million dollars. How many, are you gonna have to go get some more? But this is what really galls me. In the city of Hartford, we've just been exposed to the Joe Monkey Academy and the finaglings that have gone on there where they have a professional, Doctor so-and-so running the organization. Who has no doctor credentials? He also had a questionable background, very questionable, from out in California where he spent time in jail. And here he was, a professional, taking care of schoolchildren. And now here, tonight, I'm listening to these errors that we're now hearing about. Errors that probably happened, as the folks were saying, at the last renovation, but we still hired professionals. We have no documentation why some of these things have gone on. Did we ever ask those people for their credentials, Mayor? How about these people that we currently have? Have we asked them for their personal credentials? Or are they another situation like the Joe Monkey? I call the Joe Monk, but others call it Joe Monkey. I don't know. But are these people who put on as their professionals, do they really have the credentials to back up what they're doing? I mean, I'm hearing a guy talk tonight, and I, I'm really wondering. I'm wondering what his credentials really are. And there was several people talking, so I'm not saying who, which individual it was. But all I can say is I'm hearing that this thing that was analyzed by professionals and certified by you folks or your predecessors seems to be going up in smoke and costing us a lot of money. And then, I think even a little further, every year, the town council has given the Board of Education money to take care of issues, and they would have it in their budgets. "We're gonna fix this. We're gonna fix that." And it's year after year, they're gonna fix all these things. Why was the high school in the shape it was in? Again, we had professionals running the operation. Have we looked at their credentials? Do we know that what they were saying? And if they knew what they were saying, if they knew it, do we, do we even know if they had the ability to do this? And here we are, as citizens, paying the bill. We don't get much to say, except for a few minutes up here at the podium. You folks are the decision-makers, and look at the mess we have. I'm not gonna say anymore. I, I wanna watch the show, uh, the presentation while I still have Cox. I will cancel them though, soon, because I've gotta save some money. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Can I just say one thing?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Uh, and Sally gave me this ahead of time, the leaf collection schedule will be out this week, so check, uh, the media outlets and, so, we've had some calls today about picking up leaves, so check your, check the media outlets. The schedule will be out this week.
Thanks, Jeff. Did we get a second, any adjournments?
Second.
Yeah, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Call for a subvention. Thank you.